She got on both sides?
Yeah.
It was so loud the last time that one.
I have no, I'm sure it was cut out. It looks like it was cut out.
She did it. Glued it. We'll see.
No, she tried to.
I did it, I did it. Just one on the bottom and it's still there.
It still echoed?
It still reverberated back and forth.
Looks like overkill.
Yeah, it does look like overkill. That's why I asked.
So that way you can hit either side.
Pardon?
That way you can hit either side.
Why would I hit the bottom?
Well, if you don't know what side's the top, I mean, it doesn't matter which way it is.
Okay. No, the top is always, it's always this way. It's like a sandwich. It's like a, actually, it looks like a hamburger.
It looks very professional.
Yeah, everybody noticed that? Now I'm even afraid to hit it.
Just do pass.
So. What the hell? Not as bad, so. It's padded on both sides. So the meeting will come to order. Lizzie's here. I like that. Except I like the wig better.
But it's a lot easier.
That would be a lot easier. That's true. All right, we're going to call it to order. Oh, six o'clock.
Ms. Howe?
Here.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, here. Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Benzie?
Here.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Here.
Ms. Kellerman?
Here.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Here.
Thank you.
We'll have civil reflections. Now, this is where you're going to have the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. She is so cute. She is so cute. I'm going to take her home. No, I won't. I have a granddaughter. All right. Approval of the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
Any discussion? Take vote.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, number four, for those that are carrying the agenda. Disclosure of conflict of interest?
I have one. I need to request to abstain from voting on 14B-A, the Merz Healthcare Savings Program.
Okay. Public comment one.
Do you want to take an action on that?
Who cares?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
I'll move, I'm sorry. I'll move to excuse the treasurer from the vote as she has requested.
Second.
Accept that, the vote of 14B.
14B and A.
Yes, so you have to put that in the minutes.
Yep.
Okay, got it.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now we can do public statements. Three minutes allegedly to address what's on the agenda.
I hate to disappoint you, Rick Curtis, Park Lake Road. This isn't an agenda item, but I wanted to address this to you in the first public comment because it's impossible to hear what you guys are saying on the meeting, on the videos of the meeting. It looks like you may have solved part of this problem. It sounded like it from the audience tonight, but it seemed like as long as you leaned into your microphones or adjusted them closer to your mouths, then you can be heard on the YouTube videos. I hope you got the blackout thing fixed because that is pretty annoying too when you're watching. And I hope that you'll excuse me for jumping off protocol for this.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Judy Gardi, friends of Park Lake, and I just want to thank you in advance for your support for our summer events in June, and I know that we can always count on you as good partners. And I just want to tell you that our traffic calming campaign has begun and you'll see these along Park Lake Road. Thank you.
I would just like to reiterate what Rick said. If you all could move your microphones a little bit closer to your faces. I don't know if it just sounds like it's loud in here and you can't hear it on the video. Because I can hear myself fine now, but you certainly can't hear anything. Go ahead, Karen.
I'm so sorry. It's been adjusted since the last me- It's been adjusted since the last meeting. So we're hoping we have those issues resolved. If there is a blackout issue that continues, they are going to send an engineer out here because it's a connection issue and it is hardwired through the Internet, but we are still having connection issues. So that's the next step if it still blacks out.
Yeah, that would be, that would be great. Because honestly, you know, we know what you all look like, but if we can't hear you, then that's a problem. I am super happy to see Judy with her friends at Park Lake and to see Phil here. That's going to be great. Thank you, I'm sorry, Meg Ritchie, Outer Drive.
Thanks, Meg. Is there anybody else? Okay. For item six, for county, state, federal, and other agencies, does that help? Because if I echo back, is that, can you hear? Okay, good. I don't see anybody. Okay, consent agenda. Number seven.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All right, we'll call.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Item eight. Approval of the minutes for the board trustee meeting on March 20th.
I have a comment.
Oh.
Go ahead. My comment was I was left out, what I commented on that I was very upset about, that first of all, that none of the trustees knew that locks had been changed at the office, and I certainly was not informed that I didn't have a key to get in, and I drove all the way up from Lansing. And that was all discussed, and it's not in the minutes for some reason I don't understand. Should be, I think.
So you're putting an amendment in?
Yeah.
To, okay.
Carol, did you talk about that in the, at the board comments? That was earlier in the meeting, wasn't it, that you were talking about it? It wasn't at board comments?
It started right at first.
It was what?
Started right at first.
In fact, she stood up and kind of interrupted. We have to call order for our civil. You're going to hear my papers. All right, I'll second that motion. So we need a vote.
What was the motion?
Yeah. The motion is to amend the minutes.
And to prevent her statements.
To include her statements within the minutes.
Wherein?
In the beginning.
What?
In the beginning.
Was it the beginning of the meeting I watched it?
It was there. That's right, you were, oh, you're tan.
I am.
You are? This is part of history and it should be noted in our notes, for sure.
You're talking about the very first part of it? The very first part of the meeting, Cheryl?
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Hold on.
Okay. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes.
All right, so now we're going to vote on the approval of the minutes as amended.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes.
Item nine is the approval of your vouchers.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers as submitted.
My second.
Any discussion? Vote.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Now, we're talking about the vouchers for today, right? Yes. Okay, I haven't had a chance to look at those. I'm going to say no, because I haven't had a chance to look at them. Okay. Item 10, it appears that there's no Treasury report. However, I am hoping that this board will vote in another couple of weeks with regards to a Treasury report. I think that would be-
It comes quarterly.
It would be a good thing to have.
Steve gave one before we left, before he left.
That's-
So you'll get one.
Yes, but you're the new interim, so we should have one.
Well, that's what I'm telling you. It's quarterly, it's supposed to be done quarterly. The end of the quarter just happened, so you'll-
Item 10, Treasury report appears to be none. Committee appointment appears to be none. Township committee reports, I think we kind of got one, so thank you. Unfinished business, items for introduction. I guess that's why you're here. That's the Webster Road access.
Well, the last time I was here, a couple of months ago, we talked about, you know, the road issue. I don't know if that's, if anybody's filed for that abandonment, the road or not, but in any event, I think, you know, the township would wish to maintain their access back to their southern property on the south side of the lake. And by granting an easement from the Park Lake, Lake Level District to the township for that access, you know, is one option. Another option could be to transfer the property from the county to the township, but withhold an easement for the purposes of maintaining the berm and the control structure. So there's a couple of ways we could go on that. I guess it would be the preference of the township.
Quick question.
Yes.
Does transfer mean abandonment?
As far as the property?
Yes.
Well, right now it's in ownership of Clinton County.
Clinton County, correct.
So we would basically deed the property to the township, so then you would have basically-
Oh, so the county can do that?
Well, I believe so, but, you know, that would have to take county board action, but I'm sure it can be done.
Okay.
But we would, if we did it that way, then we would, we would retain an easement to our, you know, for ourselves, so we can access the control structure across township property like, like we do have on two other parcels that the township owns. We do have a berm and access to create easement across those properties.
But this transfer would be the whole section of Webster Road? Is that what you had?
No, that would be the one parcel that the county bought from John Duffy back in, back in 2013. So we bought, I forget how big the parcel is, but it's a parcel. About five acres, I'm told. But it's between the north township property and the south township property. So it would be adjacent to, I forget their names, the young couple that built the new house in-
O'Boyle's.
Kentarame's property to the south.
Okay.
So I guess, I guess I would want some direction from the township, which would be the preferred way to go. Either way will work.
Either transfer or abandonment? Is that what you mean?
Transfer the property and retain an easement for the Lake Level District to get back to their control structure, or the county remains owner of the property. But then the Lake Level District and the county would grant an easement to the township so they can use that access way for a non-motorized path or whatever.
Do you know approximately how large that path would, I'm sorry, does anybody else got any questions? I'm sitting here. If you have the easement, you were talking about transferring, what, 4.5 acres?
Yeah. So the current easement we have across the property at the south side of the lake, that's an 80-foot wide easement.
Oh, okay.
It's pretty substantial, but it gives us plenty of room to work on that berm.
All right, when you work on the berm, what does that do for the path that we're looking at for the Park Lake trails?
So far, what we've done is just done brush control work on it.
Right.
But, you know, there may be a point in time, because historically, that berm that was around the lake settled into the muck ground. You know, we took great care to try and resolve that issue with our past project, but, you know, we do need to occasionally check elevations on that to make sure we're not getting additional settling, and if we do, then we'll have to bring in some dirt and kind of raise the top of that berm elevation a bit again.
So the path would be a secondary type of thing? You'd have to continue to maintain that 80-foot piece?
Well, yeah, we don't necessarily maintain the whole width. We maintain the cross-section of the berm, so where it meets the normal ground, it comes up and then flatten and then back down. So we maintain, you know, at least that cross-section of the berm.
Okay. I have a question for an audience member. Where does that put, I'm sorry, but I'm sitting here looking at, yes. Who else would you look at, right? Where does that put, I'm trying to, for myself personally, trying to figure out if you have the path and you have the easement that's needed, that 80-foot, where does that put the path?
Well, in anticipation of these questions, I provided some photographs that we could see.
Could you go to the podium, please? Thank you.
In anticipation of your questions, I figured you would have questions, because this is pretty technical, you know, and not all of you spend as much time back there as I have in my lifetime.
I hope not.
But anyway, if we could fire up these beautiful, beautiful monitors, I've provided Taylor with some photos that you guys could look at and ask her questions.
Okay.
And just point out, and there's various sections Phil could navigate through. So I'll just sit back down and if you have questions after that, then, but she can show you the actual berm and everything.
No, I get that, I'm just kind of questioning where, where that fits in, I'm questioning where that fits in to the, to the trail.
The trail itself literally was, was designed, well, actually, let me take that back, the berm was designed-
Right.
-in collaboration with the non-motorized trail to travel directly on the top, on the apex of the-
Okay.
Is that parking there too, on that same trail, where they can park your car?
Parking is at the very north.
Okay.
Incidentally, the parking of bus to this proposed property-
Sort of looked like on the map.
Okay.
Thanks, Phil.
Sort of looked like on the map.
So there's your, there's your picture. This is a question. Man, there's your, there's your picture. Oh, look at that. Cappuccino. Still a learning curve, no worries.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, please do.
This photo right here, incidentally, Joe, was the one I mentioned to you. There was a question about, could you get, could you get an ambulance back there? And that, that 18-wheeler is literally sitting on top of the land bridge that, that the Raimi Chandler drain, drains from Park Lake underneath that bridge right there. So if you can get one of those across, or you certainly can get an ambulance, an emergency fire equipment, whatever, that was one of the reasons we did not want to see that portion abandoned, just for that purpose. But if you, if there's, just flip through those open-
Okay, could you hang on one second?
Okay.
Trustee Rosecrans has a question.
Okay.
On the five acres.
Excuse me?
On the five acres-
Yes, sir.
Duffy's property, is that, is that part of the parking area?
No.
Or that county will still own that?
Actually, yeah, it's directly north of that, the parking area. And that's presently owned by the township. And actually, I would say 90%, wouldn't you say? Phil, 90% of that, that five-acre county parcel is underwater.
Yeah, at least 90.
Yeah, the berm itself is literally the only thing above water.
That's why the county-
That's why you want to give it back.
That's why the county acquired that property, because with the berm being relocated to Webster Road, it was going to put that entire parcel almost underwater.
So if it's underwater, there isn't a private road that goes, where does that leave O'Boyle's and Terramee?
Okay, another photo, if you could, I don't, yeah, you have a microphone. They're just in the older folder, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, just start at the bottom and go up if you want, you know, just say go up. That's, that's the schematic of the water control structure. The red line shows the, the property line. This side here is the county parcel, from here up north. This is directly south. This is Terramee's parcel. Okay? Just so you can, you can get that now, if you would go up one. This is, shows the Terramee property.
Okay.
And this shows the historical PNG survey. This is the county property right here. And the berm travels basically right about there, where this gray line is right here too.
Webster Road goes north.
Webster Road is right here.
Right. And then south of that is where you're-
This is Terramee, this is O'Boyle's property.
Okay.
On the podium. Oh, you want to, you want to have a agenda?
Good woman, thank you.
Yep. Next slide? And you can go to the next one if you want. That's pretty technical. The next one. One more. One more. That's it? Okay, well, they're in the folder, then I follow.
All right, which folder?
Property line dispute.
So the easement goes over Terramee's property, right?
Non-motorized trail PNG, if that will show. Yeah, that, that would be fine. Okay.
Okay, that, that helps.
Is this graphic better for you?
That is-
Brenda, you look kind of- Phil, if you want, you can, you can point out what the county property is.
So, to answer the supervisor's question, we don't have an easement over Kentarame's property for the trail.
That's, okay.
It's not required.
It's not required, that's what I-
It would all be on the county property, basically, following the blue line show.
Okay. And then what Mr. O'Boyle is looking at is a private drive, now you've got the red, and that's to the west of that would be the-
Mr. O'Boyle, this, this actually is, is a satellite photo of before O'Boyle's house was built.
Okay, well, that's a long time ago.
His driveway, it goes over here.
Right.
Goes right off that right there.
Okay.
So to put it bluntly, Mr. O'Boyle doesn't have a dog in his fight. This, this has nothing to do with his property at all. Doesn't it pinch on it, doesn't it touch on it or anything?
So basically, what you're looking for, Mr. Hanson, is for this board to be able to say one of two things, one, you either abandon or transfer, whichever one that you determine. Is, and what's the second, the second one would be?
The second one would be just to grant me, or the drainage, or Lake Level District grants an easement to the township, basically following that blue line, so that then you can use that, that area to construct a non-motorized trail to access your property.
Over there. Okay.
Either way will work. And, you know, I don't know that it requires board action, one or another. You know, that's a legal question.
Well, I kind of wonder that because you own it. I mean, the county owns that, so you can do what you want to with it.
Right.
Right, okay. All right, any other questions? It's a, I'm nearly mouth here, that's-
But the one thing, this, this would protect the township's access if that road right away is abandoned, and that would, you would be able to use the, the access that would be granted to you to access the property over to the east.
Right. And then the private drive that Mr. O'Boyle's talking about would run along the red line.
Yeah, that follows the white line just to the west of the red line.
Oh, it doesn't follow the red line?
No.
It's the white one.
The blue.
Okay.
Incidentally, if the abandonment, if they officially file the abandonment-
Right.
And it is approved by the road commission, it will have no effect whatsoever on this. The historical survey that Mark Trotter stated would be is along this red line right here.
Okay.
And as you, you may recall that it goes all the way down in here.
Correct.
Because it was surveyed before this was even there, before the bridge was built. It was in 1947. And so literally, this blue proposed trail will not even touch the abandonment. So it would only involve, I mean, nothing would really change if the abandonment was approved and it became a private driveway.
If, in fact, do we know that's been filed or not?
It has not been filed.
Hasn't been filed, okay. So it's still obviously up to the county what they want to do with it. So you're, what you're asking is what we would prefer?
Yeah, I mean, there's two options. I mean, I guess three options, wanting to do nothing.
Okay.
And then, and, you know, either grant an easement to the township or convey the property to the township.
Which is what you would do for the county? You would grant the easement to the township, correct? No?
No. If the county remains ownership of that red parcel, then the county would grant an easement to the township in order to establish that non-motorized trail roughly following that blue line.
Even though we don't own it?
Right.
He'd give us an easement.
That's why you wouldn't, that's why you wouldn't have to have the easement.
Right. Okay.
So if you own the property, then you can travel wherever you want on the property. But, you know, you're going to need a vote for most of that.
Until it dries out for summer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just one final clarification, if you will. This, this all is Bath Township property.
Right.
Over here. If this was deeded to the township, this is the current county parcel, then you would then you would have contiguous property all the way here, all the way north, all the way up to Lindbergh Drive.
All right, now you're gonna have to help me out. Lindbergh Drive is where?
Yeah.
I know
Well, former Poli Aqua subdivision, we, we, I see, we, Bath Township owns all of those parcels, almost all of those parcels. And so it almost literally goes all the way up to Lindbergh Drive, which is the first, is it the first street below the, behind the church, Karen? Lindbergh?
Second.
Second one? Okay.
Second street.
If any of you have questions or you want to see these pictures, I've, that's, I've given that USB drive to, yes, sir?
I have another question. If we, if we ask for that property and it has to be filled in because the, the water level's getting too high for it or it's sunk down, you're still gonna, you will still be the one that maintains it? Or do we have to?
No, that would, that would fall
That'd be ours.
It would still be the drain commissioner
It would drain commissioner
through the Park Lake system.
Okay.
Yeah. By Michigan, by Michigan law, the drain commission is responsible for the maintenance of the deck, of the berm.
Berm.
We can't call it a deck.
That is the reason why we need to have an easement.
Yeah.
If we give it to the township, we have to retain an easement for ourselves
Okay.
to maintain that in the future.
Thank you for all these people.
No, thank you, I appreciate the information. Now, this was supposed to be for introduction, but you're looking for
No.
Okay. Okay, good.
I don't need any action tonight.
Thank you.
You know, I get, you know, at some point in time
You're gonna have to have
if, if the township ever decides to, to construct that trail, then it certainly needs to be straightened out prior to that.
Sure does. Thank you very much. Greatly appreciate it. And thanks, Ray, that's appreciated for yours. Okay, items for action. B, so it'd be thirteen B. Um, this is the final approval. Where's?
My
Oh, there he is. Don't hide like that.
All right, the item in front of the board tonight is the final approval, um, or the applicant seeking final approval of the licenses and permits for Sunrise Forest. The permits in front of you that they're seeking are the adult-use marijuana retail establishment permit, adult-use marijuana grower class A, and adult-use marijuana processor. So just a little recap on how we got here. Probably about two months ago now, conditional approval of these three permits was issued to the applicant. The condition there was that they had to go gain zoning approval for the site and structure. They have now gained said zoning approval, so they're back with the condition met, seeking the final. The applicants are also here tonight, if the board has any questions.
I see him sitting right there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, is there any question? Well, okay, we need a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant final approval to permit applications by Sunrise Forest LCC, LLC, for adult-use marijuana retail establishment. Want me to put the rest into?
Yep.
Okay, adult-use marijuana grower class A and adult-use marijuana processor.
There was a third again. My second.
Oh, did somebody have discussion? Well, there doesn't seem to be a discussion.
Okay.
So
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challander, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we have thirteen BD. Introduction of the, Miles, you sat down too soon. You always do that, you have to be called up again. Take care. It says introduction and the first reading of the zoning ordinance amendment.
Yep. Thank you for that. Um, so if you crawl from this being introduced, uh, this is the amendments where we're seeking to amend several articles throughout the zoning ordinance and then two articles in the marijuana establishments and facilities ordinance. Uh, these amendments focus on organization, clarification of definitions, and renumbering sections to be more consistent with the overall ordinance. Any questions about these changes? A clean copy was included in your packet tonight. A red line copy was included in last week, or last time's packet.
Trustee, please.
I'll move approval of the first reading of the zoning ordinance amendment number thirty-one point eight-three as presented tonight.
Second.
And I have a question.
Yep.
Which Miles made it very clear for me to be able to call him, which I greatly appreciated that. But there wasn't much that you could answer for me as to why we have the planning commission produce something that has so many ordinances in it just to clean them up. Why, why weren't we given those individually?
Yeah, we just saw it for brevity's sake and to lower the cost of the taxpayer to get these into MuniCode. Whenever we send each ordinance that we send to MuniCode for them to codify, we get charged per ordinance that's sent. So if we send one with forty changes in it, let's just say, like for a round number, um, we get charged a certain rate of, as opposed to sending them forty ordinances with one change each. We would get charged that rate forty times over.
So the ordinance won't change, the language doesn't change in the ordinance if I pull it up?
The language?
This, right, all this does is just give me a quick snapshot.
We, we are seeking to change the language in the ordinance and
Right.
it takes a couple of months because we send it off to MuniCode, but in a couple of months it will be, the changes will be reflected on MuniCode.
But the ordinance itself is going to be, say, five pages with just changes that have to do with cleaning it up. But the ordinance will be, remain the same. It won't be a snapshot like this is.
We, I guess I'm
So you're not changing, you're not changing the ordinance.
We are, we are seeking to change the ordinance.
No, I, okay, I said that wrong. The size of the ordinance, maybe that's not the right word either. Here you're giving just a summary of the ordinance. So when I go to pull up MuniCode, will it give me a summary or will it give me the actual ordinance?
It'll give you the actual ordinance.
That's what I, that's what I meant.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
So all this is doing is just cleaning up spelling and grammar, but not the ordinance itself.
Organization, uh, we're moving some of the definitions that were duplicated
So it is changing it.
in the ordinance.
Okay.
Some of the, some of the definitions that were included in the zoning that are related to marijuana regulations were moved over or seeking to move them over to the marijuana regulations, so it's organization.
So it is changing them.
Well, they're, these are updates, yeah, they're changes.
Yeah, they're changing them.
We're not seeking to change the nature. If the definition was included, it's presently included, it'll be included in the future. We're just changing up how it's organized. We want the ordinance to be clearer to the public. We don't want the public to have to go through multiple articles to find the information they need when they're only in the ordinance for one specific topic.
No, I, I get that, but it doesn't, what you're saying then, it does not change the meaning
We're not seeking to change the meaning
of the ordinance, because what you're doing is changing spelling and you're moving
Correct.
things around, taking them out of ordinances and putting it in ordinances, which actually changes it. That changes the meaning. If you take something out of it and put it into something else, is that changing the ordinance itself?
We are changing the ordinance, but we don't view this as changing the meaning of the ordinance. And that's why there were some changes that the planning commission did feel we're gonna change the meaning or the interpretation of the ordinance, and those were explicitly taken out of this batch of changes so those could come to you guys alone and be reviewed on their own merits. The only items that the planning commission moved forward in this batch were items that they felt didn't change the overall interpretation of the ordinance.
And the purpose of the planning commission was because it's quicker than taking ordinance one, taking care of it, ordinance two, taking care of it.
Yep.
We're gonna take forty ordinances at one time.
Yep. Brevity.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challander, yes. Ms. Howe?
No.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Shoot. Okay, see, would be Friends of Park Lake event. You're not gonna, okay, Superintendent?
Thank you.
You're more than welcome.
What you have in front of you tonight is a summary that I did for you in memo format indicating that in past years, Friends of Park Lake has requested the township's approval for the use of Wispsawser Park and the Rickard Bolt Launch. Um, in the previous years, it had been for the Park Lake Summer Solstice event, Summer Solstice event, um, which got derailed by COVID, but happily now it's back again. Um, the township's rental policy states that community events, um, Bath Township recognizes that festivals and similar events may have a positive impact in building sense of community. On a case-by-case basis, the Board of Trustees will vote whether to allow the use of an entire park and any associated facilities for such an event. Um, in order to do so, we place riders on our township liability insurance as a sponsor of the event at no cost to us. Um, if we were to require Friends of Park Lake to do this, there would be a cost to them to do this, um, even though they, they use the same insurance company that we do, I believe, have in the past. Um, but by us doing this, we're able to offer this event to the, to the community at a lower or no cost. Um, so with your approval of that, we can move forward with sponsoring the township liability insurance and then that also allows us to provide in-kind assistance equipment. Um, and of course, as I said, liability insurance coverage.
Quick, quick.
Please.
When you say the assistance, that's, when you say in-kind, that means like your tables, chairs, et cetera?
Yeah.
Another, oh, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Yes, make a motion.
That we, uh, give their, them the insurance rider they need, or that we need, whichever one it is.
Second.
Okay, we're gonna approve the Friends of Park Lake to use Wispsawser Park and Rickard Bolt Launch, including the parking lots, at no cost for the second annual family bike ride of Saturday, June tenth, and the Summer Solstice party on June twenty-first, including Bath Township sponsorship of the event through promotion, in-kind assistance, equipment, and liability coverage?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
I'll be above.
I just want to make sure.
Good job.
Okay, we're ready to vote?
We're ready to vote.
Okay. Mr. Wis, um, Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challander, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Thank you. I just want to make sure we're covering everything.
That was a good read, so thank you. All right, it appears like we are on thirteen BD, for those that are following, the police chief employment agreement.
Thank you. What you have in front of you tonight is the, um, final police chief employment agreement that would remove interim from the status of the police chief, consistent with both my contract and the fire chief's contract. You'll note that many of the items throughout this document have been consistently written to be the same as those other two contracts. If you have specific questions on any of the items, I'd be happy to answer them. And we also have Helen Lizzie Mills with us tonight, whose office drafted the contract for us in case there were any questions.
That was my first question.
Yes.
So thank you. So it's drafted by the township attorneys?
Correct.
Okay. Yes, trustee?
I'll move approval of the police chief employment agreement as presented tonight with lots of thanks to Gary for his leadership in this transition time.
Second.
I have some questions. Anybody else got questions? Of course not. Okay, go ahead.
Did eleven percent get put in here?
Uh, the eleven percent is in this, um, because he is the, part of the same group at MERS that we are. Um, we will bring the fire chiefs back as you requested.
Okay.
But the, in the pension section on page one, under three B, you'll notice that it says not less than eleven percent of gross wages.
Okay.
And that applies to everyone who's involved with
All town, all township employees, yeah.
Okay. All right, my question that I have, my first one, has to do with item two, when it talks about your term of employment. Why is that December and not April of twenty? Of, of course, I like the one year, but you've got it two years, which, you know, works, but you have it like two and a half.
Yeah, so usually our contracts run for three years. Um, I did it through the end of the, um, third year, which is the December date. Many of our contracts end at the end of the year, um, on December thirty-first of whatever year they're set for.
Shouldn't that be April, though, of twenty twenty-five, not December?
Hmm, it's usually cleaner if we have all of ours end at the end of the year.
Cleaner, but not necessarily. Correct.
I have a question. When did we go into, because I'm new on the board, when did you guys, um, negotiate his contract, his interim one?
It started January first.
Okay.
I, I disagree with you, so
Okay, that's, that's good, because as far as I'm concerned, it should be April.
Okay.
And not December. Because that's actually two and a half years instead of
This, I mean, this work has the ability to do that.
That's one change. Now, we can take them one at a time if you want. Is that what
Let's hear the rest of them.
Okay, well, well, okay, that's the first one, so we'll put that down as the first. Second one has to do, maybe Gary can help with this one, your vacation hours? I'm sorry. Your vacation hours and your accumulated hours of two eighty. Do you realize, and I don't know if most people know, your two forty hours is like a month? Is that right?
Four weeks.
Six weeks.
Six weeks.
Your two eighty is like six weeks.
Two forty is six weeks, yes.
Okay. So two eighty would be, thank you, I appreciate, I'm sorry, I didn't ask you up to
So where the two eighty comes from, consistent with the collective bargaining agreement with the road patrol and the supervisors, it's, uh, the supervisors get two forty per year, plus they have the ability to carry one week over, so that's where you come with two eighty.
So supervisors now have collective bargaining? Because in my time, they didn't have. Okay, so it's something that you have now is collective bargaining for everybody, for administration, which is yourself, and patrol?
That is not correct.
No, no, okay, so
We, our sergeants are in the supervisor union agreement
Right, that's administration.
and the other one.
And so that's
Lieutenant, um, has been a memorandum of understanding to be part of the supervisors' union, but the chief is not in anybody's, in any union.
So you're the only one that's not in a bargaining
That is correct.
Okay, so what you're saying then, your two fifty and your two eighty hours are not a bargaining chat that you're working on, that's just an arbitrary figure?
It's in their current agreements.
That's, well, whether it's in the current or not doesn't have anything to do with this one.
It's also met based on the time that he's put in at Bath Charter Township.
The hours, the two eighty, it mirrors exactly what the supervisor's contract is. It's not, it's not an arbitrary number, it's
But you don't belong to any of that, right?
If this is approved, I will no longer.
Oh, I see. Oh, okay.
As interim, I am still in the market.
So on your interim contract, which was sixty, seventy days that we changed to the chief, that's still, you're still working under an interim contract? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
I'm telling this is
Okay. So that's my second amendment, would be to change those.
Why, why would you want to change those?
Why, why would you want to change those?
Because that's.
He's afforded those. If the people underneath him get those, why can't he have them?
Because he's different.
He's earned them. He's been here forever, he's earned them.
Sorry, okay.
He's earned them.
That's a good reason for a contract. Okay.
He's earned them.
Okay, I have a quick, now, I know, Lizzie, you could answer me this one, because this one I didn't understand. You got a copy of it? Okay. Six, where you have your performance evaluation.
Yes, ma'am.
Look at 13, which gives you a waiver. So does this waiver mean that if there's not a performance evaluation, or hours of work, or training, or whatever the rest of this contract says that was fixed, does that negate because this waiver says so? The waiver says nothing really matters, basically, in layman's terms?
I would say that the waiver provision that you're pointing to, which is what in my industry we sometimes call boilerplate, that whole backend of it, right?
Exactly.
The waiver portion is something that we include in particular to protect the township in case, for instance, the township, if I want to use your performance evaluation as an example. Let's say that instead of getting the performance evaluation completed within an annual calendar, a full calendar, we do it at 13 months, that's technically a breach of the contract.
Correct.
And the waiver provision says, look, if we mess up, we recognize it, we move on, right? If we see that. Now, that is not intended to be a free pass in any way. The same can be said for any of the obligations that we would traditionally hold your fire chief or anybody else to.
I understand that.
And so similarly, let's say that the township, in respect to the cellphone provision, we were delayed in providing him a cellphone for some reason, technically, again, a breach, but the parties can move on. So there are a series of, the waiver provision is designed to protect both parties from those sort of small missteps that are not intended to be a breach of the entire contract, because you don't want to open the township up to a lawsuit from your sitting police chief over a, for instance, a performance evaluation at 12 months and five days, as opposed to 11 months and 30 days, or six months, or whenever it may be. So I would, I would not agree that that's a, it is designed to be a free pass, that's sort of the idea that I'm pulling from you, that you understand it to be. That is not what it is intended to be. And the waiver provision, again, is something that is actually in all of the contracts that we have prepared for this township relative to these department head-level positions. And it is also something that we typically include for our other communities, because, again, it is important to protect that there are human beings on both sides of this, and sometimes, you know, things like COVID and other things happen where we can't quite do it in the same timeframe that we normally would.
So the missteps would not be intentional missteps? So in other words, if I'm understanding what you're telling me, when it talks about a performance evaluation that has to be done, if we misstep and it doesn't get done for a year, then it's okay because the waiver says so?
In that scenario, if I were to be approached by the superintendent to say, holy moly, it's been 11 months and 29 days since we last evaluated the police chief, and I can't get the board together tomorrow to do it for whatever that process would be, my next recommendation would typically be to make sure that the parties are on the same page, she's your representative as the legal agent in that capacity for the personnel management, to ensure that those parties understand that we are going to take care of this at, for instance, the next board meeting, or whatever the next set process was. So I don't view this as a, or I play Monopoly a lot with my kids, especially right now.
Right.
It's not a jail-free card. It is designed to be that push to cooperate, as opposed to the push to run to the court.
No, I understand that, but I, I wish you'd use another term instead of misstep. There's gotta be something else, some other way of phrasing that, because in the contract it states that you will have the performance, an annual.
Shall be.
Performance, yes. That, that, and it's a shall, so yes, you're correct. Obviously, you wrote it, so you know. But then you turn around in the waiver, so now it's, well, we really don't have to do that as long as the chief, I could say you moved, as long as the chief agrees to, which of course he would, and the township with our superintendent would agree that a year is okay, that we don't do a performance evaluation. Now, the board, on the other hand, if they're reminded that that performance evaluation is supposed to be taken, is that a misstep?
So perhaps another example outside of the performance evaluation would be acceptable. Some contracts for department heads with municipal entities will require, for instance, and they still do, because we go the simple way sometimes, we don't update contracts, much like Miles was trying to do with the ordinance, right? That, you know, I always update everything the way that time moves quickly. So I still have some labor contracts with police unions and fire unions, as well as department head contracts that require notice to be given by fax. And technically, providing a hand-delivery, or mailed, or an email notice is not meeting that same responsibility under the contract. So what that responsibility is, is we are acknowledging that there may be some changed circumstances, and we're not waiving the right to enforce something, so we're not waiving the right to say, hey, chief, you still have to submit to the annual evaluation process, we're just all acknowledging, again, taking multiple examples.
Sure.
That stuff changes over time. That's a very non-legal way to say it.
No, I get that. No, I still, I understand, I appreciate the explanation, but waivers have never made me real happy.
It's okay for us to disagree about that. That's absolutely fair.
The only other thing, if I were going to do that, I'd take the shells out and put maize, because a waiver, a waiver's like a blank check. You can do whatever you want to do, the contract doesn't really mean anything. It just, it's in writing, and everybody signs it, and we all understand it, but the waiver is there for, you say, the protection of the township. I'm not so sure that protection of the township is needed, when in fact you have a contract such as this, because I would hope the board, whoever will be on the board, will be attuned enough to be able to know that they have a performance evaluation that's due.
I appreciate the perspective.
So I'm not, no, I understand.
And again, don't argue, but the board is my client, and that's the recommendation that we make.
Nope, I understand, that doesn't mean I have to like it.
Agreed, agreed.
So anyway, that would be my third amendment, would be to change your shell to may, if we have to leave waiver in. Is that what you want to do, trustee Rosecrans, is to have them all together?
Yeah, so they know what you are.
I've got a motion.
Do you have a motion on the floor?
I know, and I've had the discussion. I understand that.
Okay.
But that's what I'm asking, if your motion on the floor is to accept or reject, and I'm gonna have a friendly amendment for the three of them, and so that's gonna need to be voted on.
No, I'm not going to accept the friendly amendment. Thank you.
I realize that. Like, like Lizzie says, you don't have to agree, and that's okay. I'm just saying for myself, so if you want to skip, if everybody wants to skip that, that's okay. My three amendments, I still think are good, so we'll vote on it. Go ahead.
Okay, so a motion by trustee Ifeun's Bliss, support by trustee Benzie to approve the Police Chief Employment Agreement as presented.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chalender, yes. Ms. Howe?
No.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Ifeun's Bliss?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Hang on here. Oh, round 14. New business, items for introduction and discussion. There doesn't seem to be any, so we'll do 14B as in boy instead of A. So it's items for action, and it has to do with MERS. And I also have that one marked up, so.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the MERS Healthcare Savings Program Participation Agreement as presented.
Second.
Discussion, because I have, of course.
I, can you tell me who had the second?
I think Joe.
Joe, okay. I heard a couple of voices, yeah.
Joe did. First things first, there's actually a typo. It would be in three.
Three?
Your three I's, where it says, all appointed and elected employees hired, and OR, should be OR, not OUR.
Thank you for that catch.
That's the first one. This, I think, if I'm understanding this, because I've always had this question, what MERS is saying is that we're actually employees for the township, according to them, according to what they have written today.
The clerk and the treasurer are.
Says all appointed, elected employees.
They're, they're treated as employees because they receive the retirement?
Is that why they get 11?
11%, yes.
Not 5.5?
Correct, they're, they're through MERS.
Okay, so I'm through MERS, you get 5.5.
No, you're through John Hancock.
I'm John Hancock.
You and the trustees are all through John Hancock.
That's, so all of us get 5.5, not 11?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. Okay. All right, your effective date, let's start at the top, on two. When it's talking, is it asking, in other words, you have April 1, 2023, is that the initial agreement, or is that an agreement?
That's the effective date of this agreement.
So this is a new agreement?
It's a new agreement.
Okay, so.
Would you like me to explain that?
Yes, I would.
Okay, so it is a new agreement with MERS for a post-retirement healthcare plan, which would allow the newly-appointed treasurer to take her banked leave time, which is both sick and vacation time, and roll those into this account. We did something very similar when Brenda Butler-Chalender became the appointed clerk.
Yes, we did.
Yes. So it allows them to do that, and then make a contribution through payroll.
And that contribution?
That is my choice, what I put in there.
That's.
It's, I believe it's $50 per paycheck.
Right, it's $50, it's already determined.
Yes.
It's not.
That's what I asked for.
Yeah, okay. Okay. So then, we don't do two, which is, this is not an amendment, this is a whole new contract.
For herself. There is already a class created, this creates another class for her position.
So it creates a new class, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So this is, okay, this is where I get confused, because one and two are choices, we can make one, it's either initial participation program, or it's amended. So we're not amending, we're creating this new.
We're adding a new contribution class.
So it is one. Okay, so one is correct. Okay. That, when I looked it over, I wasn't really sure. Okay. And that would do with the appointed or elected employees hired between, at 1, 123? Okay, 2023. Okay, got it. All right, there are no, this, when I looked at it, on page two, where you have vesting cycle for basic employee contributions.
No, because it's all being contributed by the, the appointed treasurer. So there is no township contribution to this plan. Because it's a health savings account, it's not a retirement account.
No, I understand that. What I didn't know is that 100% for the percent vested.
Because it's her money.
Because, okay. So it's money allocated from her check.
Correct.
Okay. And that's the $50.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I, okay. So then upon separation, there's no check mark on, is that a reason why there's no check? And again, that's on page two.
Because there would be no forfeiture, it's her money, it remains her money.
So it says, so you don't, so it says check only one, it doesn't check any?
Right, so, yep.
So I'm gonna put none, okay? Okay. I think that probably, even though appointment to MERS as a program administrator. Okay, no, I think that's, I'll save that one. Doesn't seem, we didn't seem to be provided the plan document or the trust agreement. Is there a reason why we don't have the plan document or the trust agreement?
You've approved those in the past, I can provide copies of those if you'd like those.
When?
Are you requesting them?
Yes.
I will send them in the next packet that comes to you.
So in two weeks?
Correct, unless you would like it this Friday.
Then I'm gonna hold off on that, okay?
Okay.
No, I appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome.
This is a motion I want to make. I'll make a motion to approve the MERS Healthcare Savings Program.
I think you seconded the motion.
We already made it?
Yep, Brenda already made it.
Okay, well, it's been such a long time.
I know, it's tough to keep the attention that long, but hey, deal with it. You can do that, you can do that. Okay.
Ms. Butler-Chalender, yes. Ms. Howe?
I know we approved it for you. Is that?
The only difference is, is I want to put $100.
Yeah, instead of 50.
Instead of 50.
That's what I figured, but. God. Okay, I'll say yes. Thank you.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Ifeun's Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, superintendent's report. Number 15.
Tom King registration is now open for people in our community to sign up online. Those that are disabled or over the age of, I believe, 55, 65, can call our office and make an appointment, and we'll let them know which day we'll be coming out. Tom King Junk Day this year is on Saturday, April 29th. So we will be, usually all of staff is here on the premises and working on that day. On that day, we also have Judy, Judy's left us, but we also have the Kenny Rogers and Dolly Parton Tribute Show that is being sponsored by the Bath Township Senior Center as a fundraiser. People seem to be very excited about that and purchasing tickets. You can do that here or at the senior center. This week, I completed all the paperwork that was necessary to file us as an opioid settlement receiver. The settlements that are being conducted with Janssen and other suppliers, which has now increased to include five more, we are part of that distribution of settlement monies, and we can use that here as part of our emergency response plans. One such idea is to purchase another Lucas machine that will help do, help in resuscitation, sorry, that's a hard word right now. So we'll be looking at that money with both Chief Smith and Chief David Snyder to see what we can do to improve our response to the opioid epidemic. We also will be conducting an interview this week for the deputy treasurer position. Application's closed, and we received five, I think? Five. So we'll be conducting interviews for that, and we'll stay tuned on that situation. We do have an election coming up, it doesn't affect voters here, not all voters here in Bath Township, but those that we share with Langsberg.
I'll get it when we do that, yeah.
Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to step on your, step on your toes, I'll let you take care of that for yourself. Thank you for your work tonight, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I just want to make a, I just want to make a statement. The county's spring pickup is the same day as ours, on September, or I'm sorry, April 29th. So we have the county doing it the same day as we're doing it.
Do you have any update on the new staffing at the fire hall?
Yes, so we are putting together an interview panel. The candidates have been selected, that, we had the officer's team review the candidates and select those, those of which they had in common, and all internal candidates are going to be interviewed. So yes, we're putting together the paneling and working on the scheduling of that.
Great, thank you.
Two new, is that what you're looking at?
The two full-time, yes, the two full-time firefighters.
Okay, item 16, which is public statements. But are we surprised? Please stand up.
Hi, Ray Kotke, Park Lake Road. I know you all have been wondering where I've been. I'm sorry I haven't been a pain in your area for some time now. Been trying to heal with prostate surgery and kidney problems and COVID, if you can believe that, when I was right in the middle of that. But anyway, I'm back to bug you again. And I seem to remember, I can't remember who it was that told me that, Al, you were going to work with Phil on talking about the easement for the trailer, for something of that nature.
It wasn't me.
Okay, I don't know why, that just stuck in my head. But I'd like to offer my services. As you can see, I have quite a few resources to help fill in blanks if you guys have any questions at all. Personally, from Friends of Park Lake aspect, and a pioneer of hoping for the trail for the last decade, I think we owning that property would be the best bet for us, personally. That's just my personal opinion. The easement would be fine, but you know, you have a lot more control if you actually own it. And they're going to keep, the Drain Commission is going to always keep the easement to maintain the drain anyway. And they are responsible by Michigan law to maintain the water control structure permanently. Yes.
I have a quick question for you. Where's, Phil's gone, I'm sorry. He could have answered that, but you'll have to answer it, at least the best you can. When that contract comes about that speaks to the Drain Commissioner, will it be for every future Drain Commissioner?
When you say contract, what do you mean?
Well, whatever it's decided that the Drain Commissioner's going to do. Is he talking about just himself, or is he talking about the county Drain Commissioner? Because eventually, he's not going to be there.
It's the responsibility of the county, Clinton County Drain Commissioner's office to maintain the Rainy Channel drain.
I understand that, but...
And the water control structure that protects Park Lake from going dry.
And I understand that, but what about the easement?
The easement would be under the auspices of that office as well, irrespective of who holds the office.
Well, that's what I wanted to make sure.
It would be in perpetuity, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And also, Judy told you about the signs, so you don't need to know about that. But I haven't heard anything, and I was just hoping somebody could tell me. The individual that was hit on Park Lake Road, did we ever hear how he was, or whatever happened? I saw that on the news, and then boop, I didn't ever hear anything again, so I didn't know. Chief, if you knew anything about that?
I don't know his current condition. I just got back from vacation.
Sure. Oh, certainly, okay. I just had, at Friends of Park Lake, I'm in charge of the Facebook postings and all of that, and I've had about, I swear, two dozen people ask me. And so I said, well, I don't have any information, but...
Sometimes it's difficult because of HIPAA laws and...
Oh, heavens, yes.
Yeah, we can't always release information.
I was certain that, you know, once it's clear, he could do it, but anyway, thank you once again.
I think you could say, is he in the hospital still, or is he at home?
I think he's over there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Al?
Because that's not a HIPAA issue.
The geese, they're on their nests now. Are we getting ready to oil their eggs again?
That would be under the auspices of...
I have undertaken a contract and obtained a nest destruction permit from the DNR. So yes, that will, that will be, program will be taken.
Oh, yeah. Is Goosebusters, they're going to do that?
Goosebusters, correct.
Okay, yeah. And I heard, you know, I heard that the DNR now will not let companies such as Goosebusters actually round up the geese and relocate them, because it's just pointless. They've actually gotten rid of that process, which I don't see why it wouldn't help anyway, so. But anyway, thank you very much.
Might I say I'm glad you're back and that you're feeling better?
Okay, and the other public statements.
Sorry, I'm slow getting up. Rick here to Spark Lake Road. If what was coming through the speakers is any indication of what we'll get at home on YouTube, then I think we may have solved the problem, because prior to that, I could only hear Ryan and Karen, and I could hear Jennifer from my house.
Hey! You know I've always been that way.
And I've been telling you that for years.
I don't care.
I know.
I raise boys. You've got to have a voice.
So hopefully, that situation is corrected. Now on to my gripes. One of my main gripes was the next day after the meeting, somebody sent me, since I'm black, somebody sent me a Facebook page that was filmed with Ryan's camera, and it was, was that your camera? I'm sorry? Was that your camera that you filmed Bill How with? Your phone?
He doesn't have to engage in any conversation with you, Rick.
It says you can ask a question.
You can ask a question.
You can ask, but you don't have to answer.
No, he doesn't have to answer. He doesn't have to. That's true.
Okay, so that's a secret.
That's true.
I mean, I read that today. I was reading it on Facebook. That's exactly what it said.
And it wasn't a secret when he said, "If any harm comes to my family, look here first." That was ridiculous. Whether or not it was Marie Howe's husband, I'll give you the benefit of the doubt that you didn't recognize that it was hers. Do I need to fill out a formal FOIA request for what he's writing down during this time when I spoke, and last week when I spoke? I'm up here.
Let it go.
Okay.
Let it go.
So, anyway, after I brought this to your attention last week, you doubled down during your comments, knowing that nobody else could have a comment, and stated that you will fight workplace violence in any place. Well, gee, what a revelation, because wouldn't we all? Of course we all would. There's nothing new there. But it was more telling, because it was showing that you were trying to railroad Marie. This whole thing has been about that, and it's continued to be about that. And you've even gone as far as intimidating people. When you left the meeting last week, and me and Cheryl and two other people, Cindy Cronk and somebody else, were talking in the parking lot, and you said, "Have a blessed evening." And I responded to that by saying, "Don't you worry about it, Al. If I run overtime..." Or, Joe?
I'm sorry.
"If I run overtime, I'm up here."
I'm telling...
You don't have to like what I'm saying. You just got to listen to it.
That's true.
That's your duty. You taught me that way back when.
Is that it, Rick?
So, no.
You're running out of time. Got a minute.
This gentleman pulled out, after I told him to quit, trying to intimidate Cheryl, and then he squealed his tires all the way out to Webster Road, right beside her, she, and Cindy Cronk. This is ridiculous. This is getting ridiculous. Don't you hate being caught in a cover-up?
All right, is there anybody else that has public statements? All right, we're going to move on to item 17, which is board member comments. We started out, we'll start with you, trustee Bliss.
I did have a board member comment, just a second. Oh, there it is. I appreciated Ray's thoughts about the property issue. I agree with him that it seems to make more sense if the county's willing to give the property to us. If we were to control the land, it would give us more control in perpetuity. So if we're given the opportunity to formally take action, or issue a letter, or whatever it is we think we should do as a board, I do think that's the right option. I think it's incredibly generous that the Drain Commissioner is willing to make that pitch to the county board. That's it. Thanks.
I kind of agree. I think we should get that property.
Okay, I just want to let everyone know that there will be a May 2 election, but will only be for the Langsberg School District. We have 56 voters that live in Bath Township that vote for Langsberg Schools. The Election Commission has decided to consolidate the precincts, so we'll have all of these 56 voters go to Victor Township. Today, I sent out a letter, so everybody will know where they need to vote. And we did this in the past, a long time ago, but...
Because Victor only has one place to vote.
One precinct right at the township hall. Yep. The letter that went out to the 56 voters will let them know that the walk-in voting location changed. If they want to get an absentee ballot, they need to pick it up here at the township, and they need to return it here at the township. Does that make sense?
But if you vote?
That's the rules.
Which I do, so I have to go to Victor, which is okay.
Exactly. It's the rules. It's kind of confusing.
No, it's not confusing at all. That'll work.
The clerk is required to have Saturday hours, the Saturday before the election, just like we have in the past. It'll be 8 to 4. We will be open on Election Day here at the township from 7:00 in the morning till 8:00 at night, in case any, anybody in this area that would vote for Langsberg School District wants to come in and register to vote, or to pick up an absentee ballot.
But you send them to Victor.
If they want to do the absentee ballot, they can do it here.
Oh, okay.
And then I will take them to Victor at 8 o'clock, on your night.
That night?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Guess it's my turn for board comments. I will again explain, just briefly, no votes. Only because, as I mentioned last meeting, there had been a question as to why I voted no on certain issues. And for me, it's kind of important that you understand, you know, what was going on. I did put a yes for approving the agenda. I thought that was a really good thought for being able to say, when I say something, it should be in the minutes. I understand that. My other one with the police chief employment agreement, I voted no on that, and I voted no because I have a real hard time with the waiver thing, unless it's fixed to be able to mandate, because that's what you make a contract for. You make a contract to take care of it. A waiver just gives you an ability to not withhold that contract. So that was for me. And I think that was the only, I'm going back to see. So if someone has any other questions for me, they could give me a call at home and ask. But as far as I'm concerned at this point, thank you all for waiting for as long as you did and for coming. Actually, we're going to be early, so are you all going to go to the game, or at least watch it? Come on, guys. It's the Final Four. Nobody's going to do, I'm going to go home and watch it. I'll go home and watch it. All right, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you for approving my MERS Healthcare Savings Program, so I can get ready for retirement in 10, 15 years. And I'll have money to pay for my healthcare.
I too support the acquiring of the property from the county to develop the Park Lake Trail. I think of the concepts presented. That was by far the best one.
Agree with that? Hang on, here it comes.
I adjourn.
Are we going to vote?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Who's going to support it?
I'll support it.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fuenz Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challander, yes.